...as everyone knows for well over one hundred years and have proposed a project to keep providing the incredible service provided to the community and the residents. Through a series of updates to the site that you've heard about at the last couple of meetings. With me this evening, once again, are Matt Anderson, President and CEO, Stephanie Larson, VP and General Counsel from the Osborne, Andy Tong from DTS Providence, who we'll hear from in a moment, Kevin Storm from Bayer Blinderbäuer, the project architect, and Bob Goldie from Towers Golding. Since the last meeting in July, we've provided some additional information and updates, which Andy and Kevin will take you through in a moment. I just want to highlight a couple of items. Based on some updated survey data, we've determined that existing slopes related to stormwater basins that are being expanded to increase volume will trigger the need for a steep slope permit, so we've added that to our application package. There's some updated cut and fill information as well. We reaffirm that we do not anticipate rock removal, as well as the fact that the Osborne is committed to parking and staging being accommodated off of public streets. We've also provided some information in response to a question last month's meeting regarding the vegetated areas above underground parking, which we believe do not, should not count as impervious or toward coverage for the reasons set forth in the letter we submitted. And probably most relevant, we've shown some slight amendments to Building Three, but most importantly, some additional revisions to Building Ten, which we discussed at length last month. And Kevin from Storm will take you through what they've done to try to redress some of those issues and some updated renderings and other visuals that we show, that incorporate some of the landscaping and we think are a more accurate portrayal of how that building will fit into the overall campus and be screened pretty effectively from public views. So with that, I'll ask Andy to come up and take you through some of the technical matters.
The other thing for your list, we'd ask for some further detail on the construction phasing.
Yes, there is actually under-construction access and parking, the phasing, I think, can be covered there as well. Andy, floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening. Andy Tong from DTS Providence. I'll cover the three site-related issues and Kevin Storm will take on for the architecture. So just to refresh your recollection of the proposed plan, the existing buildings are numbered in blue. The original SOS buildings at the north end of the site, the three independent living wings and the cottages built in the early two thousands. The two areas of proposed additions are at the north end of the site, to the north of the oldest buildings and in the center of the site, so that they relate both functionally and design-wise to the three courtyard, the two courtyards which are set up by the older buildings and the newer buildings. Existing site driveways will remain the same in the proposed plan, as will the existing circulation around the site. There'll be some slight adjustments to the site ring road to accommodate the new buildings and to provide direct access to them. And some of the surface parking will be removed from the site. Today's surface parking is put underground below the new buildings, for which there will be also new underground parking provided. There are three existing stormwater basins, one at the southwest corner and two on the eastern boundary adjacent to Post Road. Both, all three of those will remain. The southwestern one and the northeastern one will be expanded. As Seth mentioned, there are existing side slopes within those basins that do exceed twenty-five percent slope per the city code. And in expanding those, they will not be made deeper. Those bases will not be made deeper, but they will be made broader. So those side slopes will be affected. It will be, in fact, removed and relocated to the outside. There will be no new sanitary or sanitary, no new water or sanitary sewer connections to the street. All the proposed changes will happen within the campus. Because the Osborne, as you may recall, is on a high point within the city. Its existing sanitary sewer flows go to two systems, one Osborne Road, aligned in Osborne Road that goes to the Mamaronek Sewer Treatment Plant and one in San Drive that goes to the Blind Brook Plant. Based on the city sewer study that was completed several years ago, it was determined that this San Drive system was more challenged in terms of I N I and capacity than the other system, the Osborne system. And so we are, in fact, in the process of providing new sanitary sewer infrastructure within the campus. Rerouting or diverting forty-five thousand gallons of existing Osborne flow from the San Drive system to the Osborne Road system to better balance the flows within the city network as coordinated with the city engineer. So as Seth mentioned, we're in the process of updating the survey. The topographic information has been completed. And in so doing, we have established that within the two basins that I mentioned that are to be widened, there are areas of slope basically in the side banks of those, interior to those basins that exceed twenty-five percent and will be affected by the broadening of those basins. There is also a grass bank at the front of the building, just off the entry circle, between the entry circle parking and the ring road, which will be within the footprint of the assisted living building. And so that also will be stabilized in another way after construction.
Andy, was that slope made as a result of prior construction?
Yes, yes. All these are man-made slopes.
Well, obviously the basins and also the one going through the building.
Yes, that was in the creation of the parking and the parking along the Ring, the Circle Drive and the Loop Road, so it was created sometime ago.
So is, I'm assuming that the amount of slope that's going to be disturbed is below the threshold required for, is that it?
Yeah, we need to cover it.
No, we just have the-
But it's not, it's not the super steep slopes.
It's not very fair.
They've actually included-
This, this topographical map's different from that one, so I'm a little bit confused. Are you, is the red the same? No.
We tried to make it simpler, actually.
Oh, okay.
That's more detailed, that actually reflects-
So if I were to be paying attention, because this is the piece I have, what color should I be paying attention to on this one?
The red and the orange are the regular slopes.
It's just that wasn't very hard to read.
I was like, okay.
It does have scale.
Nice to see this.
Thank you.
In terms of construction access, phasing and parking, we showed this diagram last time. We've corrected the label to reflect that all construction access will be through the main entry at the gatehouse. The entry, current entry at Old Post Road and Boston Post Road, which is occasionally used by residents, will no longer be used by residents during the construction period and will only be for emergency access. So all the traffic will be off the old road, primarily off the main entrance.
I think when we get to a public hearing, that's a key point to make.
Yeah. We know that particularly in this area of the city, construction parking on city streets has been an issue in recent projects. And so the Osborne has committed to locate all construction parking either on the site or in remote lots to be accessed or to be shuttled, with workers to be shuttled back and forth to the site. The number of onsite and offsite parking spaces will change during the course of the construction because of the areas under construction and the amount of juggling that has to be done to allow the residents to also safely access the site. So that would be determined at the time of each successive building program. There will be a number of building permits applied for during the course of the project.
Do you know how your phasing is?
The phasing is basically going from north to south.
It's, the idea would be to go more towards the center and then back to the out, yeah. Because pivots that way because of the assisted living building that would have to be built out later. So pivots middle to the back if we were to do it now.
So this area would be constructed first and- There are a series of snapshots, not in this most recent submission, but in the submission for the June meeting, I believe, that it showed-
Was that for, for sanctions?
A sequence of activities over the site, and this first one being basically the site preparation and preparation for the beginning of construction with the primary construction office and the parking at front. Kevin?
So we wanted to give a few updates from sort of building massing and architecture light perspective. We're not quite super deep in the architecture yet, but we just wanted to be as transparent as possible as the buildings evolve and sometimes some small or sometimes some resuming changes happen. The last time we showed, this is actually to orient everyone, the SOS cluster of buildings here, the proposed new independent living wings. And then this was the proposed assisted living structure. This was how this looked in the last time we submitted. And we've, just in developing the building, have sort of made slight adjustments to the shape of that building to kind of align it more with some regulating lines of some of the existing buildings. And it does not affect in any way the building footprint or the coverage or the numbers of units or anything, which is just a kind of a site architectural tweak to the building massings. We look to just make sure that if you saw that in the submission, you weren't surprised or noticed the difference there. So that was sort of the first architectural issue. And then the second is, you know, we heard the comments and concerns around this, what we're calling the hybrid building. You can see on the little key map here, you see Old Post Road, sorry, this is very sensitive. And you can see again the SOS buildings up here and this area was, there was some concern about the nature of that building and its potential impact on views and its proximity to Old Post Road. So we've dove in a little bit deeper on this and done a couple of different things, which I'll walk you through. So this plan on the left is what was previously submitted. And, you know, after hearing this comment, we, you know, recognized that in fact, there is, even though we're kind of trying to divide the building into two pieces, there was this kind of general perception of a very long front. You can see it was previously, you know, in its previous form right there. And so we thought, what if we could kind of alter the way these buildings are connected to articulate them more as two distinct separate masses? And especially given the angle that is perceived from Old Post Road would really kind of read as two distinct volumes that are kind of smaller. You're not looking at the, you know, the length of a long, one super long building. And then when you sort of begin to look at that, again, the larger version of the plan right here, you can sort of see its proximity to Old Post Road and how, you know, again, we are, just as a reference point, we're showing the pavilion, the skilled nursing pavilion, about a hundred and seventy-five feet off of the road. With these now, you know, the two hundred and two hundred and seventy-five at the sort of two extreme points. And with the center kind of pulled back, we're beginning to see, you know, these two structures is reading as, you know, basically two three-story buildings over a parking structure that's embedded in the landscape. So this red dashed line that you see is the existing slope. And so where you'll see in the next images in a moment, how this is sort of buried into the site. So it really kind of tries to kind of, you know, appear as a three-story, three-story building sort of set within the landscape. And in addition to that, we've stepped back the top floor at the corners and also along the edges to kind of get, step back and try to be as sensitive as we can to kind of, you know, view corners and that kind of thing. We'll show you what that-
So, so the driveways going into it are relatively level?
Yes, the driveways, these two driveways going into it are level, yes.
So I would thank them to help the break up the massing and that emphasis of the landscaping, the landscape right there in the center.
You mean right, right here? Yeah, let me show, yeah, I'll show you, we'll, yeah, for a game in just a sec, so. All right, so this is now, this is a more accurate sort of zoomed in, what we're just describing with the landscape plan. This shows a combination of existing and new trees, so I've, you can jump in if the numbers of trees are, okay, I can't remember the proportion that we're putting on this part of the site, but it's a substantial, really kind of two layers of really dense tree coverage and then an additional layer right up against the building. So if I, sorry, so if you look sort of at this view right here, this is, you're already, you know, on the side of the Osborne. And you can see now how this is starting to read as two smaller structures. And a couple of other things that we've been trying to, you know, to think about in terms of addressing some of the earlier comments about, you know, architecturally breaking down the residential, to a more residential scale, the moldering placement, the verticality of the windows, trying to make it feel sort of more residential and a little bit more fine grains, sort of more human scaled elements on the building. And then at the base of the building, where the, you know, where the base is revealed at the entrances of the parking, actually we're using a green screen, a green wall within, you know, within the pillars of the structure. Again, to kind of embed it in the landscape and really try to make, you know, to give as much green and foliage there as we can. So I'll walk through these really quick. These are, you're gonna see, there's like a series of three views, three, just watch as the image changes as I flip through them. This is an existing view from Old Post Road. This is the view with the new buildings in the, in the winter. And then you can, if you focus right here, this is the location of those hybrids that are kind of articulated as two separate structures. And then you can see in the, and this is, I guess, you know, an important point, is during the summer months and during, you know, spring and summer fall, the different layers of tree plantings actually make most of this sort of, you know, screen for view regardless. And, you know, this is, we've actually gone through a lot of trouble to kind of put in the actual, you know, actual tree removals and actual new planting trees. And this is about a five-year lookout for growth, and so it will get even denser. So that's, you know, that's sort of the first of three views. This is the second of three views where we're, again, you can sort of barely see on the key map. We're sort of marching to plan right. Now we're closer to the SOS buildings. This is the proposal as it looks in the winter. You can see again, like the two, the two buildings here with the flag behind it. And then in the summer. And then this is the third view that we're, yeah, it's self-explanatory, you are. And then this is the view in the winter. Again, I'll point out sort of the hybrid structures over here in the winter and then the same view in the summer. I think that's the last slide that we have. I'll go back to the section I gave, if it's any more clear, you know. You know, I think what's important to note here is, again, is these sort of three, three layers of sort of foliage that really screen it and then the, you know, the setbacks and the relative height of the other buildings is important.
Thanks, Kevin. That was essentially our presentation for this evening, but the whole team is here and we're having answering questions the commission might have.
You have a new site plan, like just the whole site? So you're, you're expanding the upper left-hand corner drainage area, like do you conceptually show what water's going there, like how that's working?
Basically, it takes the water from the existing southwest quadrant of the site and some more area from here.
So you're approving existing drainage then mostly for that one, right? Because most of these are good.
Yes, we're creating, we're increasing capacity here about twenty percent and here about forty percent.
Okay, and so how, how is, are you putting in new drainage pipes to get, to fix that area, I guess? That's, because you're not really building anything where your hand was swiping.
Right, right. We're not, it's not really, we're not really fixing the area, we're expanding the capacity. So, yes, we are extending some of the pipes that go today to add more volume to that area.
I just, you're not, there's not, you're not, not a lot of building going on over there, so I was just wondering.
No, there's not.
In your environmental assessment form, you have a comment that net cuts approximately seventy-five thousand cubic yards.
Yes.
Do you remove all that off-site?
Predominantly, yes. In order to maintain as many existing trees that we have, there's not a lot of area that we can fill onsite. And we're increasing the capacity of the basins, so the basins need to provide more-
We just need to then have you review kind of how you're removing it and, you know, both like what machinery and what route and whether it's gonna have an impact on the environment.
We can, we have the ability to stage that material onsite. We can stay there permanently, so it's not, doesn't necessarily have to go all at once out. And there will be excavations for both sections of the site, so we're not creating that seventy thousand at one point in time. So it will be staged over time. We have the ability to meter it out, as you, if you will, over, by transporting it over a period of time. We can coordinate that as we get into specifics.
It wouldn't be helpful if you also to quantify the number of construction trees. Have you, you know, have the construction workers, it's also something that you know? Can't recall off the top of my head, if that was stuff in the traffic analysis.
No, traffic analysis did not include construction workers. But we can add that to the phasing diagrams that were previously submitted to show the sequence of truck trips over time.
We did receive a public comment about that question.
Okay.
Burns on the roads, damaged the roads.
Thank you for letting us know.
Can you just remind us where there's underground parking, just with your finger quickly?
Primarily under the courtyards of this courtyard. This new entry plaza will be above parking. It serves both the independent wings and this connected to-
It spans underneath here with a access point off of this-
All right, so the whole areas, and then on the other side too, there's one, right?
And so right now, there's a three-sided sort of view of underground parking underneath the two thousand, three thousand, four thousand. We're connecting that underneath this new building, so it makes sort of a donut.
So it doesn't go under building eight?
Correct, parking underneath.
So it won't be under ten?
It would be, yes, under ten.
So that's why you have the greens-
And within the garage.
The green screen, because that's actually, is that actually the garage where we're saying?
Yes, it's the garage edge, yes.
And is that naturalizing or is that gonna be some kind of effect?
Oh, no, we, it will be real. Right, I'm not, let's see, about the greens.
Even will, will it be organic?
Yes, of course.
Yes.
Okay, so it's organic and so what we're looking at that first level is actually the garage, so is it really underground or is it, it's above?
It's half, it's embedded in the site, so when the, the front of the building facing the lawn will only be three residential stories. And then the front of the building facing Old Post is that you can see the base of the garage with the-
Kind of working with-
With the landscape, it's a way to kind of-
So the way you measure that is an average grade, it would be a three-story building, but on one side it's four, on the other side it's three. And the average grade, I think your building height was forty-one feet, which it could be four stories fifty-five feet under the zoning.
Right.
And actually it could go sixty-five feet, I think it's two hundred and forty feet from property lines. If you go back to that convention, it was two, two seventy-six and one ninety-seven, I believe.
I thought it was distance from the level.
No, it's distance from the property.
This is where property line, right, was two seventy-six on this and then one ninety-seven on the other side.
So I, I mean, I'm just assuming you understand the zoning and obviously this was the, time the zoning was done, it did apply to the whole site. It went through all the analysis, but a lot of litigation was related to the other side. You had this two-lane Osborne Road residential neighborhood.
Property line is basically the wall.
Yeah, no, I guess, I think this is a great place.
From the road and then- So we're all on board that planting on top of a parking garage is impervious surface? Is that, is that, is that what we all agree is?
Well, there's two things. There's the engineering side of it and then there's lot coverage.
Right, right.
Lot coverage is where you're covering a lot, so if you go to that overall plan. Like, I can see a glimpse of it actually on this plan here a little better. It's the same grid as the next story. That entire thing has a garage under it.
But we counted it as impervious?
It would, whatever the engineers say the engineers has to do for drainage, it would do whatever it has to do. I don't, I don't know that, but in terms of coverage, this would not be considered lot coverage.
The green space.
The green space. It would include, as they've done, if they've converted all that gray to semi-pervious material, that would also constitute lot of coverage. You know, it says impervious, it doesn't say semi-pervious. So, here's the point I'm trying to make, is there's lot coverage and there's runoff calculations that engineers do.
The access, the access drive between the two wings of building one pointing out to building two is asphalt, so that's-
Yeah, but there's a ton of green, like the other courtyard is all-
Which is fine, that's over a parking garage.
And it is not covering the lot, it is under-
Right, right, right.
So two standards.
Okay, as long as we're all consistent in that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so I think we need to move this to a public hearing to start getting input on this.
We got a, just so you all know, we got a lot of feedback from community members, particularly families that live in your area that are worried about the start of the school year and want to make sure that if we open the public hearing, that they're gonna have an opportunity to listen in October. We've been there, we're gonna have this for September. So I just wanted to put that out on the table, but that was the message. They were like, please don't open it yet. They wanted us to wait October, but I get the point that the more public opportunity is possible. But there's a lot of folks that are worried about the scheduling of the next planning meeting being the same night as the school board meeting with the new superintended, and they don't want to miss being able to come to the public hearings. So I just wanted you to all hear that.
Is that, is that an email or something?
Yes. To you.
So there are, there are two meetings.
Did you get it too?
I didn't, I got it.
Well, yeah, thank you. It said, we have two meetings in September. We have the ninth and the thirtieth. If you want to-
It's just letting you know.
We can put it off to the thirtieth if necessary, but I would just certainly have to-
I don't have to keep that in mind, I don't have the email on.
We resolved to keep it open for two meetings.
No, we'll, we'll-
You can do the kind of-
Yeah.
I don't want to prejudge it, but I don't know.
Yeah, we're certainly prepared to present on the ninth.
Typical with the cabinet. Obviously, we did, we got signatures next door.
So, yeah, I'm assuming you would keep, you have more than one public hearing or something, yeah.
And, yeah, I mean, we're, we're pretty sensitive to the thought that parent, that people aren't paying attention often in the summertime, so tonight is, we have the-
The same regis, the first hearing, nobody showed up, so.
It's always the second hearing you have to address.
So, okay.
And guess what? No one showed up in the second.
I know, it works such a strange-
Hard beliefs.
Yeah.
Coast, both directly conflicted here. Apparently, both meetings in September are for that change.
Priorities, priorities are what?
For that change, we're about to have a September meeting.
It tells more about Houston Chase than you.
For work.
I think, yeah, I mean, we, it's, we try to not have conflicts with our own boards and commissions because of that, it does get a little tricky. I don't know what the October schedule is, but.
Well, people have legitimate conversations with them and it will, we can, we can, if we have issues that continue to be submitted to us, we'll keep it open. So we still have comments from the city engineer on the drainage analysis and the, and, yeah.
We only have one meeting in October, unless the fourteenth. No, I'm sorry, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Certainly, we'd like to start presenting to the public if you're following the ninth and then-
It's always a mix, like. You keep going and you keep waiting and they're like, well, there hasn't been a public hearing, why'd you wait so long? Get that quick, it's-
All right, that's, we're going through September.
No, I don't mind saying the public hearing, I just wanted all of you, if that gets us, it's really important that the neighborhood understands and feels like they've got a chance to come and talk to you, so it's just important, yeah.
And there's always in writing, as you mentioned, yeah.
So they have September ninth, September thirtieth, October seventh, and October twentieth.
That's the board event.
That's the board event.
So under that premise, we would have just one hearing that didn't conflict.
The fourteenth.
Yeah, but not, but not everybody is gonna go to every school board meeting.
It's supposed to every.
They're hoping to know for the one where the superintendent's being introduced.
It's my guess too, I mean. Yeah, I feel like they don't.
Yeah.
I mean, unless there's something they're going to.
Yeah, and I don't think there's anything other, anything big other than the superintendent.
Do they Zoom those meetings and record them?
I, I don't know.
I'm sure they'll report them, but yeah.
So I just want a general comment from this board, given from the public this year and also for you. Um, and we, and I appreciate that, um, building ten, that you were really trying to address the massing on the building because that's all that we have jurisdiction over.
Understood.
And you, you will have to go before the VAR and they may have a different view about what kind of windows and trim and things like that. And that's not our purpose. So I kind of want us all to know that what we've asked, what we asked for was to have this scale kind of addressed. And we, I appreciate the way you kind of stepped it back.
Can I have a motion set to public hearing for September ninth?
So.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. For the rest of summer, we'll see you.
Thank you.
Everyone, do.